Please stand for a moment of silence and then the Pledge of Allegiance led by Council Member Iveno.
(inaudible)
Mayor Hill has asked for an excused absence tonight. Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Iveno.
Here.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you. Okay, agenda modifications. We have one modification under number 11. We are switching item A to item B and item B to item A. We now have proclamations. Presentation of the Sebastian Clambake Foundation proceeds to the 2018 beneficiaries by Ms. Teddy Hulse, Foundation Board Member.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for inviting us and allowing us to do this, Mayor Kitchen. On behalf of the Clambake Foundation, excuse me, I'm Teddy Hulse. This is Pat Rivezio, our Vice President. Aunt Janine, I know you're watching. We miss you. Thank you for all your help. We would just want to give off the figures and when those, if those people are present, if you would come up and get your check from Mr. Pat, we'd appreciate it. We're going to start with the program grants. And these are grants that are given by application for special projects that these organizations have. The Equi Medical Food Pantry, would you please come forward? The River Fund, $1,850.[141.38][141.38](applause) The Fassad Program, $1,850.[146.94][146.94](applause) Don't be shy, come on up! The Boys and Girls Club, $1,850.[153.22][153.22](applause) SOS Cookies, $1,850.[161.31][161.31](applause) The Pelican Island Elementary, Pat can't find the envelope.
That's all right.
They were in order. GFWC Sebastian River Junior Women's Club, $1,000.[181.51][181.51](applause) The Sebastian River High School Chum Buckets, $1,000.[189.12][189.12](applause) Please sit. And the Sebastian United Methodist Church, $1,850.[196.51][196.51](applause) That is a total of $14,950. If you ladies and gentlemen, just turn around so we can get a picture, please. (pause) No. Thanks, Janet.[215.81][215.81](applause) Yes. I'll take care of that number. Okay, that's Sebastian United Methodist Church.
Right.
Now on to the beneficiaries. These are decided by our board members who get together and they present their requests and then they decide who's getting the money. Pat and I have nothing to do with this, just so you know. Again, the Equi Medical Food Pantry for a shade canopy, $1,350.[255.79][255.79](applause) The Treasure Coast Rugby Association for their field, $3,000.[265.02][265.02](applause) Madam Mayor, would you come down and get the money for the City of Sebastian for $3,000? That is for the sidewalks in the Riverview Park.[275.33][275.33](applause) Elks 2715, I think it is?
2715.
2715, you're up. $3,000 for their pavilion.[286.72][286.72](applause) The Sharks Football for the scoreboard, $3,000.[295.83][295.83](applause) Roseland United Methodist Church for their security system, $3,000.[302.83][302.83](applause) Kashi Ostrom for their Septic to Sewer Project, $3,000.[312.12][312.12](applause) And last but not least, the Sebastian River High School Crew Rowing Team, $3,000 for improvements to their facilities and facilities.[326.02][326.02](applause) Total beneficiaries, $22,350. Our total output this year was $37,300.[338.81][338.81](applause) We'd like to thank the City of Sebastian, the Public Works, the Sebastian Police Department, the 600 volunteers who were out in some really not-nice weather Friday night with lightning and storms, but they came back the next day to work too. And the community, because without your support, none of this could happen. And we are looking forward to the next one. Thank you very much.
I'll take it.
(applause) That's all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm looking for Ms. Marsha Powers from the Early Learning Coalition. Hi, Marsha. This proclamation is for Children's Week, March 24th through March 29th, 2019. Whereas the 24th Annual Children's Week, celebrating parents and children, will take place in Tallahassee from March 24th to March 29th, 2019, bringing thousands of parents, childrens, professionals, policymakers, and community leaders together to share valuable knowledge and information about children's issues across the state and in our capital city. And whereas, the purpose of Children's Week is to create a shared vision of the state of Florida's commitment to its children and families and to engage a long-term process to develop and implement strategies. And whereas, the Children's Week Committee has teamed up with the statewide businesses and nonprofit organizations, including the Early Learning Coalition of Indian River, Martin and Okeechobee Counties, and other local organizations to expand the network of community involvement on a wide array of children and family issues at the local level. Now therefore, I, Linda Kitchen, Vice Mayor of the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim, March 24th through March 29th, as Children's Week in Sebastian, Florida. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sebastian to be affixed this 27th day of February, 2019. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. I just wanted to share a little bit about the Early Learning Coalition. We currently serve approximately 700 children in Indian River County, our most vulnerable. So we really appreciate the support in the community for children and families and building those strong relationships between our business communities and our families. So thank you very much for acknowledging us and the work that we do.
You're very welcome and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, Ms. Karen Meel.
Senior Resource Association. Hi, Karen.
How are you? Good.
Okay, March for Meals Campaign. Whereas Meals on Wheels America established the National March for Meals Campaign in March 2002 to raise awareness about the escalating problem of senior hunger in America. And whereas this observance of the March for Meals Campaign provides an opportunity to support Meals on Wheels programs that deliver vital and critical services by donating, volunteering, and raising awareness about senior hunger and isolation. And whereas volunteer drivers deliver nutritious meals to homebound seniors and individuals with disabilities along with caring concern and attention to their welfare to help them maintain their health and independence and avoid unnecessary hospitalizations and/or premature institutionalization and provide powerful socialization opportunities. And whereas the Meals on Wheels programs in Florida deserve recognition for the contributions they have made and will continue to make to local communities, our state, and our nation. Now therefore, I, Linda Kitchen, Vice Mayor for the City of Sebastian, and on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim March 2019 as March for Meals Month in the City of Sebastian and urge every citizen to honor our Meals on Wheels program, the seniors they serve, and the volunteers who care for them. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Sebastian to be affixed this 27th day of February.
Thank you so much. Thank you.[654.16][654.16](applause) Thank you. Good evening, everyone and Councilmembers. Thank you very much. During the month of March, we joined thousands of Meals on Wheels programs across America to create awareness about senior hunger and isolation. Two factors that influence our health and the aging process are nourishment and socialization. Senior hunger and isolation are serious problems in our community. Food insecurity affects seniors differently. Even if a person has the money to purchase food, they may not be able to because of lack of mobility, functional limitations, and/or health problems. These reasons can prevent older adults from eating properly. Our Homebound Meal Program helps alleviate isolation and hunger. Our Hot Nutritious Meal is delivered by our staff and volunteers to our clients five days a week each week and offers two frozen meals on the weekend. All meals are planned and evaluated by a registered dietitian to ensure it contains one-third of the daily nutritional value. Last year, SRA delivered 72,128 hot meals to homebound seniors in Indian River County. But we all know that this program is more than just delivering a daily nutritional meal. It's also a daily wellness check. It provides the seniors and their families a sense of security and saves lives. A visit by a friendly Senior Resource Association volunteer or staff member is for many seniors the only socialization that they experience. Our Meals on Wheels program also includes a social congregate meals. Last year, we delivered 22,795 meals to those locations where individuals come, enjoy a hot meal, and have fellowship. The Emergency Meals on Wheels program is for seniors who have been discharged from a healthcare facility within the last 30 days. A Hot Nutritious Meal is delivered daily for two to four weeks at no charge while they recover. This program is funded completely through philanthropic funding. And last year, we delivered 4,522 meals to clients through this program. And lastly, our Pet Meals on Wheels program. This provides our clients with pets with the right type of food so that the clients do not share their food and that their beloved pet, which as well as we all know, is not, the food is not good for the pet and takes away from the important nutrition our clients Overall, because of our generous volunteers and donors, last year, Senior Resource Association Meals on Wheels program delivered over 100,000 meals to seniors in Indian River County. That's an average of 250 meals each day. This feat cannot be accomplished without the wonderful dedication, time, and effort of our volunteers, 125. Please know that there is still so much to do because right now, today, in this county, there are 177 seniors on our waitlist needing to receive a daily meal. The cost of to feed a senior is $3,000 a year. And on March 11th through the 13th, SRA is once again hosting Champion for Meals, which is a wonderful opportunity for community leaders, and I know all of you have been invited to participate.[867.89][867.89](laugh) To...
No pressure.
No pressure there. Exactly. To be a champion for meals, which is a wonderful opportunity for all of you to get to know and experience the gratification of delivering a nutritious meal to our homebound seniors. And I know a number of you have participated previously, and we thank you for that and we hope that you'll join us again. And thank you for allowing me to take the time to explain about our program because it is so important for the community to know that we are there for seniors and for the nutrition that we want to provide to those seniors that need it. So thank you very much for the proclamation. I hope to see you on March 11th through the 13th, one of those days. Please contact us and any of you also. And if there's anybody else interested, please call us. And thank you very much.
It's only a couple hours.
It is. It takes just a couple hours. (pause) Thank you so much.
Thank you. Bye-bye. On March 2nd, the Craft Club will be in Riverview Park from 10 to 3:00. On March 9th, the Pelican Island Wildlife Festival will be in Riverview Park from 10 to 4:00. And on March 15th through the 17th, the Shrimp Fest and Craft Brew Hallabaloo will be in Riverview Park Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you. I'll now recess the City Council meeting and convene this community redevelopment. Council, approval of minutes?
I move approval of the minutes from January 23rd, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Item B, Fassad Sign and Landscape Program, consider grant request for 1,004 U.S. Highway 1, Arthur and Amy Preep. Staff?
Yes, Mrs. Vice Mayor, Member of Council. We received this application and staff has been diligently working on this property. As we know, it's been vacant for some time and it is in blight status. And they had considered, they had came to staff, the owners had come to staff to try to get some relief and get that building into a condition to be either sold or to be leased out. But I'll let Ms. Fraser go into the exact details of the grant application and the things that they're going to do and then allow Council, if you have any additional questions, after that.
Thank you, Mr. Carlisle. As you have in front of you, they are planning on quite an extensive remodeling of this building, which has been quite an eyesore and is attracting businesses to come into it that are not within our zoning code. And so the property owners just to the east of them purchased it and they would like assistance in bringing it up to a standard that would attract, hopefully, possibly, the correct businesses. We are encouraging them, we encourage them to go ahead and submit this application to you, the CRA board, knowing that they do not have a current occupational license in this building. And though we feel that it meets all of the facade grants criteria, which we put in your package with you, it does not meet the application as in having a current occupational license. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We feel really excited about all of the landscaping, new sign, painting. We are not paying for the roofing, but they are going to be doing that and upgrading the parking lot. So it's all there in front of you for your consideration. And the property owners are also here if you'd like to speak with them. Thank you.
Any... Go ahead. Do you have anything you want us to ask or question?
Yeah, I guess I have kind of an issue with this. We don't know if it's leased or purchased, whether that building's even going to stay there. It doesn't really fit very many of the business uses that we would do on U.S. 1. It can't be a car lot. It can't be a skilled worker facility. I think there was actually someone tried to turn it into that. And the building itself is not conducive to a lot of retail. It's very old. I would question whether it's even being brought up to the current code. It might be a lot more encompassing than just putting some siding on it to bring it up to the current code. I like the landscaping. I'm kind of, you know, that's really nice. One of the criteria, it's on page 35 of 82 in our packet, but one of the criteria for ranking these is removal of blight. I mean, I would be a lot better off putting the money and taking that building away, recognizing that if you purchase it, the property or lease it, you're going to build something new anyway. I mean, that's a corner piece of property and that old building sitting there and that little garage beside it are not something that anybody's going to want to use, I don't think. I mean, I would be surprised. So I have an issue with investing city money or in CRA money, given the limit on how much we have in this venture, given the fact that we're talking about putting a lot of money in additions to that property that aren't probably going to be there if they lease it six months from now or a year from now. That money goes away. The landscaping part of this is not that much money. I think if I look at their proposal, landscaping piece of it was, what?
3,400.
Landscaping was $4,600. So half of that, if we were to grant that half to get the landscaping done or something. But I just have an issue with putting $15,000 of our limited budget into this, not recognizing that the facility's going to be something that's even possibly going to be used in that case, in that timeframe. So that's my concern.
Okay. Mr. Iveno?
I'd like to hear from the owners or the folks that are going to be taking this on, hear what their plans are and hear what they have to say, if that's okay.
Mr. Preep?
Ms. Fraser, was this, it used to be a gas station?
At one time, it was a gas station.
Probably in its past, yes, sir. But currently, or just previously, was an auto sales lot. That's correct.
Yes, my name's Corky Preep. I'm here with my wife, Amy. Yes, we purchased the property last fall and we do own the property to the east of it, to the river. And we purchased it because we didn't want something going there that was going to be overwhelming because we have future plans of possibly building a residence on the property to the east. Yeah, the building is old and we realize that it's going to take money to bring it up to code. But in the meantime, we would like to fix it up and make it presentable and try to meet the riverfront community criteria and hope to get a nice small business in there that could provide some income for a while. We don't know down the future that it may change, but for now, that's our intention. We've been residents of this community for some 35 years and we don't plan to move. We love it here. We have a design and engineering business and we've done a lot of designs for this community. And if somebody is potentially wanting to do something bigger and better, we're all for it and we will help them design it and engineer it. So we're looking for approval on our application to get this slum and bright cleaned up and make it sunny and bright, so to speak.
So the property's not going anywhere. You're the owners. The building may or may not stay depending on what your plan is in the future, but if we invest the money in you, you're not going anywhere.
We're not going anywhere.
Okay.
No, we're not investors to, like you say, improve it and then move on. No.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
All right. If there's any questions, I'll try to answer them, but that's our intentions.
Well, your proposed plan for the landscaping and the improvements is phenomenal compared to what is out there now, so I really appreciate that.
Yes, we think it'll look a lot better and with the new sign and that color on the building is awful. Once we get some, we're kind of putting some ship lap on it to try to bring it into a more of a theme for this area.
Okay. Mr. McPartlin?
Well, since I've been sitting up here, I always looked at it as we were trying to improve existing or new businesses that were coming in. Being there's no resident in there currently, it's kind of like we're looking at, we're speculating on this piece of property. And again, if we do that landscape and make it nice, people who come in may not want that landscape. And I don't think, I would be more comfortable if there was an occupant in there and a business that was in there currently. Was there a charge for the application fee?
No, sir. And that is why when we contacted the applicants, we stated that, you know, only the CRA board can approve this application. There is a risk, but there was no cost, so the applicant decided to go ahead and present in front of you.
All right, thank you. Because that could lead us down to we got other unoccupied dwellings in the CRA district. What's going to stop them from now coming forward to assist them in beautifying the property and possibly selling it? I'm not saying that's what you're going to do, but we have living net funds in the CRA.
We've had... Yeah, one of the things that kind of struck out to me is the $39,000 bid that is in the document, page 11 of 82, $25,000 of it is modification to the two buildings that if you put siding on those two buildings, the first thing that the city's going to do is expect you to bring that outside of that building up to code. There's no dollars in here to do that. They're not going to let you put siding on a non-coded building. You're not going to get a permit to do that. So the question comes about as to, you know, it just, it seems kind of scary to me for us to invest money into that if we've got now the building and the next thing we find out is it's going to be another $50,000 to bring it up to code, so you're going to knock it down anyway. We're going to invest half of $25,000 in improvements to it. So I would be, I would incline, be inclined to approve a match on the landscape and not on the buildings in order to, it's minimum expense. And if a client, if someone wants to come in there and do something on the property and wants to change the landscape, the plants could still be saved. It's not like you're going to throw them in the dumpster. You're going to pull them out of the ground and possibly reuse them, so that's kind of my position on it.
Okay. Anybody have any other questions for Mr. Preep?
No.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this matter? Seeing none, council?
Well, one other thing I'd like to say is that we have had a lot of interest in the property and not only through us, but through Dory.
As renters or...
In the planning and zoning that want to lease the property. The sum of the few up front have not met the commercial riverfront or the zoning requirements for that zoning. But we have others in mind and we don't think we'll have any problem in leasing once we clean it up and make it look presentable.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the landscaping portion of it with maybe, can it be contingent upon after they, we approve the landscaping that they come back to us with possibly having a lease E for the property and then maybe we can approve the other portion of it?
Lisa?
Yes, sir. We absolutely could do that. There is no, the time limit of the two years is for the full $15,000, but you can add on to other elements within, you know, an applicable period.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve the 40, what'd you say, 4,600 was it? The landscape portion of it?
Yeah, that'd be one-half of that landscape, hardscape improvements.
What's that total?
2348.
I'm sorry?
2348.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve 2348 for the landscaping portion of it with the contingency that they come back with potential leasers. Somebody that wants to lease it. And then once they have somebody that wants to lease it, we can possibly approve the pavement and some of the other stuff.
That's the will of the council or the board. We could bring that back to you all if he was to come back with a bona fide lease. It would give him an opportunity to show these renderings to a potential business and then it would not disqualify him then with a potential business. They may want to make a few more tweaks to it even, and so that may make it even more palatable for them that they would have an opportunity to do that. You're not telling them no. You're saying if you have these prospective business clients, they'll have an opportunity to maybe address some of their concerns when you come back for the reevaluation of the grant, if that's the direction of the board.
If I may, may I suggest that since it's only 50% for the landscaping, so it would only be 2,500 that we would allocate, around 2,500 that we would allocate for them. The dumpster enclosure, if the board would consider adding that, just because then that kind of brings us into compliance and that method also?
I may have missed it. I didn't remember seeing a dumpster on that property. Is there one there?
Well, I believe they want to add one.
I know, but it's not an operational business. Why would they want a dumpster?
Well, they could, they could put a dumpster and... Well, they could, they could put a dumpster and dumpster enclosure at, at any time.
Yeah, I mean, they can add the dumpster. Someone comes in and wants to put a business on that property, no matter what they want to do, the position of the dumpster, there's not even a driveway there to get to the dumpster a, as it's shown on these plans. That's, that's kind of new stuff. So, I, there's no dumpster there. I don't know why we'd want to build an enclosure and then have somebody come in six months from now and say, oh, gosh, I want to, here's my plan for the lot. I want to move the dumpster over here.
I, I completely understand, sir.
Yeah. So, I, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
No.
Okay. So, you have three yeses the motion carries.
Okay, next on our agenda is the fiscal year two thousand eighteen CRA annual report.
Mr. Kilgore, are you speaking on that, or, okay. Lisa?
Good evening. Every year, um, by March of that year, by March thirty-first, we are by, by statute, um, required to submit an annual report about our activities, how much money we, we brought in and how much money we expended. Um, Mr. Kilgore has provided those figures for the board. It is an unaudited version, uh, which is completely allowed. Um, however, we are bringing it to you early since we will not be having a CRA board meeting in March. If you recall, the second meeting in March has been canceled for the time being, and it, it is a cost to us to advertise that, so we thought we would just bring it to you a month early. Um, if you have any questions, Ken and I are here to address those.
I move approval.
Second.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, we will now adjourn the Community Redevelopment Agency meeting and reconvene a city council. Consent agenda.
I'd like to pull item C, please.
Okay.
Move approval of items nine A and B.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Dodd?
Okay, item number C is a revision to the city's, uh, audio and visual policy. Um, it, it was brought to my attention by an individual that there isn't any indication of what's changed in the policy, because the old and the new policy aren't in the, in the document. So, maybe if the city manager would like to kind of give us a breakdown of what the changes are.
Sure, um, Vice Mayor, member counsel, the, the policy, for the most part, remained the same. Some of it was technical. The, the technology that was in there and the requirements for what was being submitted to be shown wasn't compatible with our systems. There wasn't a, and we're speaking with the city attorney, there wasn't an appeal process. So, if the city manager or the city clerk were the only two who were authorized to put anything on there, if we just said no, that can't go on there, there was no appeal process. So, the, the city attorney thought it would be beneficial if we put an appeal process to city council, that you all would be able to reverse that. And there were some old provisions that only the city manager and the city clerk could have anything taken off. So, even if an, an article or a slide that was put up that wasn't current anymore, we would have, technically have had to approve, approve taking an old item down. So, this allows the, the broadcast staff, if an event's canceled, they're doing it anyway, but it really, the policy didn't allow for it, so we're trying to correct those issues. But substantially, the, the, other than that, those items, it's pretty much the same document.
Okay.
Satisfied?
That's satisfied. Is there anybody in the public that wants to speak?
Anyone from the public?
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. What I found interesting in this is the fact that you've put a resolution that we are changing, a city resolution, under a consent agenda, irregardless of how minute or frosty dot the I. The public, since I've been here eleven years, every single change to any of our statutes went before the public. This here, if I didn't ask the question, would have been a consent agenda agreement with no one knowing or looking at or understanding what it is. It's, uh, putting the workings of our, I guess this here is our radio sta, uh, TV through Comcast. Well, again, it's a revision to one of our ordinances. It should go before the public, not to the council for a consent agenda. And I'd like to know, really, why it's not being done that way. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Carlyle?
It's a routine in nature. It's not a substantial change, and, and this is not uncommon for items such as these to be taken on, on a consent agenda item. If it was a brand-new policy and, and a brand-new resolution, but minor revisions typically are, are done through consent agenda. But if the council wants to see even minor revisions to a policy, this is not a law. It's a, not an ordinance change, it's a policy. Um, we would be happy to not put those on consent.
Counsel?
I'm good with the way it is.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I can understand. That's the reason I brought it up, because Mr. Hocker was the one that, that approached me on this, and I can understand his position. I can also understand that this, this is a minute thing, but I do understand his position that if it's a, a city ordinance or policy that impacts the way the city's going to interact with the citizens, then it might be something, and we might want to break apart and give the public an opportunity.
Sure.
Wait, one of the problems with a consent agenda is that, uh, the county, for example, a county commission meetings provides an opportunity for members of the audience to pull items from the consent agenda. We don't do that, so it's not possible for someone in the audience who wants to ask questions about a consent agenda item to actually pull it. So, they have to come up, like he did this evening, and ask if someone, if I'd pull it for him, so. But I'm not, I'm not uncomfortable with the policy, and I move approval of item nine C.
Madam Vice Mayor?
For a second?
Before we, Madam Vice Mayor, before we, uh, entertain a motion, could I go ahead and just read the caption since it was pulled?
Absolutely.
Uh, resolution number R nineteen dash oh-six, a resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, adopting a revised City of Sebastian public broadcast policy, providing for live broadcast of city board and committee meetings, providing for repeal of resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict herewith, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date. Thank you.
And that might be a good reason why we need to do it outside the consent agenda.
Uh, just, you know, from, from legal perspective, just to explain, in chapter one sixty-six, it does require that all ordinances be read. It doesn't require that resolutions be read. Usually, the only resolutions that must be read is if it requires a public hearing, which, because this is an internal policy, wouldn't require a public hearing, so, um, but that's just-
Thank you.
That's, that's the legal end of it.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please. Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, are there any committee reports or appointments? If not, we will open our first public hearing. We are switching these around. Item A will now be B, and item B will now be A. So, this is the public hearing on the second reading and public hearing of ordinance oh nineteen oh-two stormwater utility fee credit. Mr. Stokes?
An ordinance of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, amending chapter one oh-two, article five of the Code of Ordinances, providing for clarification, utility fee credits, and establishment of fees, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for Scrivener's errors, and providing for an effective date.
Mr. Carlyle?
Yes, Madam Vice Mayor and member of council. As you know, we've had the first reading of this ordinance, and at that time, there were, um, some minor modifications that council asked us to make. One was a clarification where on section A, it was one oh-two dash one-two A, we changed that to one-two-four. You know, that strike through's not there. That was a modification change, and rightfully so. Um, the council asked that we take out the good faith estimate of fees actually due. The, earlier in the ordinance, it says you must pay the fees, so we removed that line from the ordinance as requested by council, that they would pay, and what that would mean is they would have to pay the fees due. If they were due a refund, then we would refund those, those fees. Other than that, that we had not made any additional changes to the ordinance since the first reading, and if that, as, again, this is to establish a policy at the direction of city council to develop a stormwater, uh, credit fee to businesses based on the stormwater, the changes in the stormwater fees, and, and to compile, compile a way for individuals to get a, a, a justifiable and equitable, um, distribution of the, of those credits, because previously, we didn't really have a, a good grasp of how those fee credits were done. So, we felt this was a good way to measure, a good way to put this policy forward and, and to try to administer it with some type of, of substantial justification.
Okay. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this ordinance?
Yes, ma'am. With the help of the, um, staff, I have picked through this thing, and several months ago, when it was first brought up, it was, uh, my, I have to identify myself. I guess I am C N Curry. I own property in the north edge of Sebastian, and that property is, uh, in a condition now from the modification of your fees, it is now a condition where it's going to get very expensive to pay stormwater fees. Several months ago, I was up in front of you again and, or previously, and here I am. I must bless the staff for helping me through this a little bit and pointing out some of the issues and problems. But the main problem is this. It was brought up that I would be able to accomplish ninety percent reduction in the fees. This came directly from the days, and now, it appears I'll be lucky to get fifty percent on top of the fees having been doubled. It gets serious monetarily. So, at that point, I wish you would look at this thing, reconsider it, try and work with myself and other people that have this kind of a situation, myself being that I do not actually contribute any impact to the stormwater system in the City of Sebastian. There is a, a minor error on a site plan which will be corrected. The engineers are working on it, but the fact is, we do not drain into or through the City of Sebastian. We have virtually no impact. And as such, we ask that you review these fees, put something in there to give relief to that situation before you pull the trigger on this and make it law. It's, uh, red on the edge at this point, I see, and I think you're going into a, a territory where it can, uh, do myself a, a serious injustice.
Okay.
Has anybody got any comment on what was offered several months ago?
I agree with you. I voted against it. I don't think that we should have doubled the impact, that doubled the fee right off the get-go, and, uh, it's my understanding, if I read my, uh, bill right the other day, uh, the, the county's actually getting ready to, uh, increase their fees as well. They, they have a little thing, and they're saying their fees are getting increased. You go on their website and check it, so.
I didn't know they even had a fee. I thought that was part of the tax system.
Oh, there's, there's-
But, but the, the issue, one of the things to think about is there's two, there's two things on our agenda tonight. There's the ordinance that establishes this, this whole system. That ordinance actually references, although it doesn't say it because of the legalities of the situation, but it actually references a policy that's the next item on the agenda. That policy is the Sebastian Stormwater Utility Fee Credit Policy. That's the next item on the agenda. After we approve the ordinance, then we can approve the policy.
What an-
Under the stormwater, under the stormwater, let me finish. Under the stormwater policy, which we'll address in a couple of minutes, if you don't have any impact on the city's stormwater, you're going to get a ninety percent reduction. And if you have a plan that shows you have no impact, then you're only going to pay ten percent of that fee. You're not going to pay fifty percent. So, that's a mechanical issue, and if your property does not fit that category, then you're going to pay a larger amount. Um, I, I don't personally see any issue with, um, any issue with the policy, which we'll get to later, that has that, and that's where all of the, the amounts are listed. That's where the dollar amounts, the percentages of credits are listed, not in the, not in this ordinance. Um, as far as the stormwater fee is concerned, quite frankly, uh, three of the biggest problems that Sebastian's got right now are story, and one of the top three is stormwater. And we have not been able in the last ten years that I've been attending these council meetings, um, in the last two, two and a half years, uh, one of the things that I screamed about the most when I ran for election the first time was the fact that we didn't even have an adequate stormwater retention, uh, program. We're building that right now. We're putting together a stormwater, um, a stormwater master plan that actually is going to be a master plan that we could execute. We have to have funds to do the stormwater. Uh, you can't do stormwater with no money, so it's that simple. So, the, the doubling of the fee will allow us to attack correcting the stormwater problems that we have. It's not to say that three or five or six or seven years from now, we can't reduce that fee after we've got the major problems out of the way. Right now, we have many areas in the city where the swales don't move the water the way they're supposed to into the ditches that don't move the water the way they're supposed to into the canals that are falling apart. And then, and into the river, uh, we just don't have a system that works well. It wasn't designed well by General Properties. It wasn't built well by anybody, and it wasn't built very well by the contractors who building houses helter-skelter throughout the city and building dams in the swales as they build those, and we have to correct those. So, I don't have any issue personally with the doubling of the stormwater fee. I hate taxes, quite frankly, but I don't have an issue with doubling the stormwater fee because we have a problem we have to solve, and it will solve that problem. And I do think that the percentages we're going to talk about in the next item are very attractive. I mean, uh, the ten percent is basically what the city has to spend just to administer the stormwater system. So, I know you don't think so, because you're paying them. I understand that.
You get a credit as to what it costs you, and it's not ten percent.
Yeah, I mean, I understand that, but-
Yeah.
Uh, if, if your property doesn't impact the city's stormwater system, you're eligible for a ninety percent credit. So, that's, that's what you can prove when you provide the information with the application. And if you say that you have a problem with the site plan that you're correcting, and if that site plan is corrected, comes in and it shows no impact, you're going to get ninety percent. So, it's up to you to correct the site plan and to provide it to the city. If you're not, if it doesn't show that, you're not going to get ninety percent. I know you're shaking your head.
Because, uh, if I may, can I, may I, please?
Yes.
Because it's not just no impact in the city. It's if you have pervious and impervious, all accounts into that. So, I just want to clarify, just because your water runs into, doesn't run into a city system, if you have impervious areas, that has to be taken into consideration. So, if, to get ninety percent, it has to be raw land, impervious, and not, and not, not have all pervious-
Well, okay, yes. I, I mean, I, we, we're not talking about the policy, but I can read it. It says ninety percent is property greater than ten acres that contains no impervious surface and are undeveloped.
Correct.
That's it. If you have that, you get a ninety percent reduction.
Correct.
Now, if you have a large parking lot that you're just not doing something with right now, that's different. Much different. Yeah, I understand that. Yeah, I understand that. I'm just saying that we can't write a policy because one person doesn't like what they're going to pay.
Yes, sir.
To do that, we'd have to go to zero fee and just let the water go where it goes. And I don't think people would be happy with that. I really don't think people would be happy with it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Curry.
Uh, unfortunately, that is not the way it's coming down. Uh, what I have been told is there is no way I will ever get ninety percent, yet it was mentioned that I would be able to get it. What has happened is the credit fees are not reflecting what was coming off of the days five or six months ago, and the end result is it's going to impact me to quite some degree. Now, pervious or impervious on a piece of property that never drains into the city then becomes moot. You are not worried about impervious or pervious. It has nothing to do with what goes into the city, because it never contacts the city. So, we've got this thing a little bit inside out, and I ask that you hold up on this thing until you do a really serious analysis of what you're proposing. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm closing the public hearing. Any other summation from the staff?
Um, Madam Vice Mayor, yes. Uh, again, the, we think this policy and staff has worked diligently, and as, um, Councilmember Dodd said, we cannot write a credit policy for each and every individual scenario- scenario that's out there. We can write one that is fair and equitable and based on empirical data. If you have impervious properties, that's a use, and that has an effect on the runoff and that goes into our system. And our system may not be part of what we manage, but we're also entitled by St. John's Water Management to also get the waters that are going into waters of the state, which his does do, that we do what we are supposed to do as part of our NPDS reports and part of our stormwater program.
Anybody else up here would like to say something?
Ms. Kinchen, I move approval of ordinance number O-19-02.
Thank you. Mr. Avino, anything? Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, our next public hearing is Resolution R-19-03, Stormwater Utility Credit Fee Policy. Public hearing is now open. Mr. Stokes?
A resolution of the City of Sebastian, Indian River County, Florida, providing for methodology, application, determination, and deadline for requesting stormwater fee credits pursuant to Section 102-124 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Sebastian, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for scrivener errors, and providing for an effective date.
Staff?
Madam Vice Mayor, it's a member of council. This is, since we have passed the ordinance on second reading, this is the enacting resolution that authorizes us to administer the credits and to take applications and apply data based on the application and the submittals by the applicant to equitably administer the code and administer the credits. And I give staff a lot of credit because they beat up, and we beat up, different scenarios and tried to massage this thing as much as we can. And as we said earlier, there is just no way to write a credit policy other than, as Mr. Dodd, Councilmember Dodd said, just give, just say no credits, or everybody gets a credit. The one thing this policy does that the previous policy did not do, it allowed existing businesses an opportunity to do best management practices and low-impact developments to increase their, increase their credits. When I spoke to the resident, one of the things that I've mentioned to that resident was that if your pond is a 100-year storm, there's additional points. If your pond's a 25-year storm, there's not. So, there's been things that have been addressed in that conversation that are in this policy that may increase or could decrease depending on impervious areas. So, I think we, you know, we've really looked at this, and I think a lot of thought went into it. And, you know, I think, I think it's a great policy, and I think it's, I think it's something that can be managed and be defended for all, in that, in that aspect as well.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this part of the, of resolution?
Yes, ma'am. Back again. It seems to me that after a number of years and approximately $10 million that has been collected, something ought to be decreasing in its urgency, and the size of the city hasn't increased. The monies, I don't know where they were spent. I haven't dug into that thoroughly. Maybe that's needed. It also comes down that we're talking about fees not as an individual, but anybody that happens to have the same scenario. And I haven't bothered to research them yet. And I'm sure there are other people that are concerned about first doubling fees. I've never seen anybody double the fees. Go up 5%, a little bit here and there, yes, as you need it. But to double the fees? Well, that's water under the bridge at the moment. Now, when you get down to an ordinance written for an individual, no, I don't think so. And when your first comment on this was, well, you're not draining into the city, we can probably get you maximum credit. Well, having looked at these fee schedules, there is virtually no way I would get the 90%. So, whatever happened in between what was said by the mayor and what we have now is a very substantial increase in my fees. There is no reason it should be, very simply. That property has not changed in 10 years. It's exactly as it was. Now, my fees are going to go up about 40 or 50%. This is not an individual situation. This is a legislative thing that has put the load on me. I find it very, very difficult to swallow. So, again, I would ask that you reconsider this rather than pass it and work it out to where these people that are in my boat don't get sunk.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public wish to speak on this item? Anything else from staff?
No, Madam Vice Mayor, I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have.
This public hearing is now closed. Counsel?
If you'd first actually give us enough time, there's not that many pieces of property in Sebastian. Do you have to actually inspect it to report?
No, there's not. And we have, we're going to send a mailer out to get them to us. We have to have it to the property appraiser by July to get the, get it on the trim notice.
What I was wondering is...
And so, we can't, we wanted to try to do it originally in May, but there's just no way with all of the hearings and things that we need to do and get mailings out to those applicants that are currently getting credits and to businesses that don't get credits to get them an opportunity to apply. So...
Well, I mean, the policy says June the 1st. And the second, under procedure, second paragraph, it said the applicants must be filed by June the 1st. And then, it goes on later to talk about every three years. So, that's June the 1st, every three years they have to file that, right?
Correct.
What that means is that we're, we're kind of hamstringing ourselves between June and when we have to get it to the property appraiser. Let's say half the people come in on June the 1st and lay them on, on the desk in community development. Now, that gives us a very short window of time to do the inspections and then to do any negotiations that comes, because I'm sure there will be. There's going to be discussions with people after you get through the process with them. So, I would think that in the procedure, we should try for May the 1st. This year, does that, I mean, why can't we get this approved in time to have May the 1st as a time this year?
Our challenge, our biggest challenge is trying to allow, give them an opportunity to do any engineering or get an engineer to certify what they have. In this climate of construction and things that are going on, that may be a challenge for them. So, we don't want to prevent them from being able to apply either by bringing it back to us and also getting those mailings out. So, we, we talked about that, and that's why we, we wanted to get this completed as, as quick as we can and to get it out to the, to the businesses. The ones that are going to reapply that have them, we have a lot of documents already, and stormwater staff has inspected those. So, those are going to be pretty easy. It'll be the new ones that, that come in that'll be some of the challenges to get them done. But we don't anticipate that there'll be too much there that we can't get it done in 30, 40 days.
Okay. So, you're, you're going to add the resources, whatever you've got to do to be able to get it done in a window of time?
Yes.
And then, in the out-years, now, when we get three years from now and everybody has to come back again, then you've got the same issue if June the 1st is the date here, and we're building that into this policy. Maybe we should build the May date in for three years from now and do an exception for this year. I'm just trying to see, we write a policy that handstrings this a little bit for implementation. And then, three years from now, we're going, oh, gosh, I wish I hadn't given them until June the 1st, but I did. So, I don't know. It's just, it's, you've got to manage the city, so it's something to think about. But once we approve this, we've set June the 1st as the date.
Yes. And, and just if I may, so, this first year will be the heavy year, but as they come in, it'll be three years from the date they apply. So, it won't be the June the 3rd, June the 1st, three years won't apply to everybody. So, somebody who applies in 2020 will apply again in 2023.
Yeah. But right now, we're going to make everybody in the city apply this year.
That wants to apply. We'll give them that opportunity.
That's right. Everybody in the city that wants to apply this year. And I'm not talking about residences and all. I'm talking about just the people that want to apply. So, we're going back to the base, zero. We have no approved credits as of right now if we approve this, which we've already approved the ordinance. So, we have no approved credits. So, if you want a credit, you've got to apply by June the 1st. So, all of the property owners in the city who are wanting to get credits are going to apply. So, by default, we've established a window now. That same number of people is going to apply three years from now all over again.
That's true.
We're not creating a staggering method. We're not saying, okay, now, a third of these people will do it again next year and a third. We're creating a dam, a water block, saying, okay, everybody's going to do it in three years. Now, the people who have, who come in next year with a new piece of property that we would probably have to annex, because right now in the city, anybody who's got property is going to apply. And if we don't annex anybody, there won't be anybody next year that apply. So, you can address that.
Would you, would you mind, Mr. Dodd, if I answer a little bit of that process? Because we did go over that process quite thoroughly, because as staff, we're limited staff, and it is going to be a hardship. However, please be aware that currently, well, not this year, but next year, or last year, and the years previous, there was about 50 applicants, and they all came in every single year to reapply. We would send letters to them saying, hey, it's time to reapply. They would reapply. And it's really, the reapplication is obviously a lot simpler than the initial application. And I believe there's going to be a lot of properties in the city that possibly could get some credits they are not yet receiving. But I think there's going to be a lot of properties that are going to have to work on getting a credit for the next year. For instance, some of our smaller redevelopment lots, they could add some LIDs or, you know, some low-impact designs or some best management practices that might get them a credit the next year. So, it'll be a staggered effect. It won't be 100% obviously of all of the properties. And, and we're gearing up for it. We will be sending out a postcard beginning of March we're shooting for, or middle of March, to all of the eligible properties, the commercial industrial properties. And at that point, we'll be ready to, to gear up and go check the properties and see what they have and try to apply it equitably.
Okay.
So, we understand that it is, it is a big weight on the staff, but I believe that if we send these posters out by mid-March, we should be able to, by June 1st, get it all answered, or by July 1st actually, so that we can get it to the property appraisers.
Okay. All right. That was my only question.
Vice Mayor, if I may, I'm not opposed to Councilmember Dodd putting a line in there that says June 1st of this year and on May 1st in the subsequent years, which would cover, cover that in the resolution. Mr. Stokes?
Yes.
I'm not opposed to that. And it makes some sense.
All right. This public hearing is closed. Counsel, any other comments? Action?
Approval of the Resolution R-19-03 adding in the May 1st subsequent years going forward.
Roll call, please. Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Avino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Ms. Vice Mayor, did we do a public input?
Yeah, I was going to say that, too.
It's next.
We didn't. It wasn't in there.
It's not on the agenda.
It's not. It's after unfinished business, right?
What do you mean? It's just on the agenda. It's on my agenda.
What number you got?
It's number 13.
I got unfinished. I am on 13 or 14.
Well, you people just have the wrong agenda.
Obviously, we're not on the...
I don't have a 13.
We are now at public input.
Twelve to 15.
Is there, the agendas on the table have the last page.
Oh, all right.
We are now at public input. Is there any from, from the public that wishes to speak on an item that is not currently on the agenda? I got this, guys. Really.
All right. You're correct. It is 13.
Thank you.
Ben Hocke, Sebastian. I've been out of touch for a while. I was watching the live council meetings and the parks meetings, but they were not on the internet. Last month's 15 or 18-minute council meeting, I turned my computer on five minutes after. Wasn't there. I then looked for Parks and Rec. That never showed up. I spoke with the young lady who handles this. She says, well, you should have called me when the meeting was on, and I would have looked into it. What are we doing? It was before I'd click on live, be right there on a computer, come up on YouTube, didn't have any problem with it. Now, I get two separate screens. One's an advertisement screen from Comcast, and it depends on what I have to click on, other than it just sits there giving me repetitive items. I assume it's being resolved. My question is, what are we doing with our motel? Are we putting homeless in it? What are we doing? And the reason I made that sarcastic remark is, we put automatic locks on the restrooms. I was down, and it was like quarter, quarter after 10. Two people go into the locking restroom at 10:30. The door locks. They're internal to the building. Nobody knows they're there. They're safer in that bathroom, the unfortunate people that have to do that, than I am in my house. They're locked in. Nobody can get in. Nobody can disturb them. And if they get up before 5:30, when the lock opens so the public can use it, nobody knows they're there. You might want to have some volunteer, somebody, whatever, look into this. Because we've locked the one at the fish market, Gravy Bills. We've locked the one at Main Street, the one at the Yacht Club. And I haven't gone to the park. I don't know whether the park has it or not. But it automatically locks at 10:30, and nobody can get in. I've witnessed people going in prior to that.
Okay. Thank you, Ben. Anyone else wish to speak?
Well, good evening. My name is Bob Stevens. I'm at 150 Concha Drive, Sebastian. Vice Mayor, Councilpeople. I'm here again. Here I am. Tonight, I'm representing... Excuse me. A little bit of mucus here. Tonight, I'm representing the citizens, the disappearing birds and fish, and the other animals that can't speak. Please stop poisoning our waterways. That's it. Don't smirk at me. Stop poisoning our waterways.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? We have no new business? Mr. Stokes, do you have anything for us tonight?
Just one item. Mr. Carlisle and I met with the county on the fire marshal, the dispute resolution. It was actually his meeting, because the first step in Chapter 164 is that the two chief executives meet. But like, like good chief executives, they go nowhere without their lawyers. So, myself and the county attorney were there as well. We had a fruitful discussion. There was a tentative resolution, kind of hammered out. Don't want to go into a whole lot of details because we want to give the county administrator and county attorney an opportunity to, to discuss this with county commissioners. But, but it is something that, that, you know, I'm more than willing to talk to any of you about if you want to call. What we kind of need right now is that once Chapter 164 is initiated, all the discussions have to be in public meetings, which is understandable. But now that we're working out the finality of, of the resolution, myself and the county attorney want to kind of work it out, get their stamp of approval, and then, of course, we'll bring it to you. They'll bring it to the county commission for final approval. So, you guys still have control over it. You know, I will say that it keeps our program in place, but with, with certain, with, you know, within certain parameters of things that they'd like to see while maintaining what we'd like to see. So, it does definitely seem like a win-win. It's not our process, because they're the ones that passed the resolution initiating the dispute resolution process. And so, hopefully on Tuesday, they will entertain a motion and pass it to, to terminate that process. If they do, I'd If they do, I'd kind of like to get the cart before the horse